All the February thirteenth Athabasca County Council meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. The, as is our normal custom, we'll go through the items that must be. Selected for discussion because of either incomplete or ambiguous recommendations. And then open the floor to additional other additions. Uh, first item I have is seven point one, seven point three, seven point seven, eight point one, eight point two. I assume, I'm going to say ten point one X. And number eleven point one. I'm assuming that council men's would like to add ten point one D. But also add ten point one E and ten point one J between. Counselor and I, there'd be an update on those committees. Uh, Counselor Anderson.
Speaker, I'd like to add five point three.
Five point three, other items, seven point one is on the list.
Counselor Cromwell. Like to add eleven point two, an emergent item.
You tell us what that is.
Section seventeen, one, personal privacy.
What does it relate to? Like, is it emergent?
I believe it is emergent.
Does it relate to the Aspen View letter?
It is the Aspen View letter.
Right, that, there's nothing emergent about that letter. We all saw it. We all have a copy. There's nothing that's time bound in that, that doesn't meet the criteria. Counselor Holland.
I believe, uh, that we would can take that to vote, whether or not we would like that considered. We don't consider it to be on it in according to.
Counselors have an obligation to uphold the bylaws counselor and. Items that are urgent or emergent that cannot wait to be included. And there's no, no discussion about why that can't be.
Um, I believe that in procedure, I would like to challenge that in procedure, it does mean that we can put that in book for consideration.
Hey, other items to add. Counselor Wallach. So the items to put to the agenda. Are, um, five point three. Seven point one, seven point six, seven point seven, eight point one, eight point two. Ten point one D, ten point one E, ten point one J. Ten point one X, eleven point one. And can on relating the item eleven point two proposal, can you explain why it's urgent? Why it meets the criteria of urgent or emergent? There's, given there's no time constraints in that item.
I believe being that this come out, we need to get on top of it and I fully. Stand by the fact that it should not be ignored and needs to be addressed.
Okay, so it's missed the time deadline, that item, I will rule that that is not an urgent item. On the question of the agenda, are there any further additions or deletions? Counselor Holland.
Thank you, I'd like to challenge your.
You can't challenge the procedural bylaw.
The procedural bylaw says it's up for consideration. Consideration means a vote. So I believe that that is something that should be fair. Um, and we should allow counsel to decide, and I'd also like to add ten one, ten point one G.
Ten point one G? Okay. Okay, so whatever the chairs of the opinion of the motion is contrary to the rules and privileges of the council. Uh, they shall apprise the members without proposing the question and cite the will of authority. Should any issue pertain? To procedure or process arise, it is not covered by the bylaw, it should be decided by a majority of council. This is clearly an item that is, um, doesn't meet the requirements and there, I will not be proposing it. As it relates to the agenda, we have. A number of items added, do you require me to go through them again? Do you want me to go through them?
Yes, please, and I'd also like to use the challenge that has been given to the chair.
I've already explained why that doesn't apply. The items for discussion today are five point three, seven point one, seven point six, seven point seven, eight point one, eight point two. Ten point one D, E, G, J, X, and eleven point one. On the question, who wants to move the agenda? Counselor Capitanic has moved, the approval of the agenda has amended. And the question of the adoption of the agenda, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is six and three and the agenda is adopted. First item of business is five point three, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to direct.
Sorry. Okay, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to revise the policy to only reference the governing aspects of an emergency alert system and remove procedural elements.
Stop you there, counselor, the, um. We often work on precedent and process. Um, and in the past, we've held that, uh, when a committee makes a motion coming to council. Do we have an obligation to, to first consider the? The recommendation from, from the committee that was a majority of council, is someone willing to move the recommended motion first? And then you can speak against it if you'd like. Counselor Cromwell.
So moved.
Counselor Cromwell has moved the policy six, eight, one, five, the app. Policy be adopted as presented. Open the floor for discussion, Counselor Cromwell, do you want to speak to it first as well?
I will speak.
You'll have the closing, you, you have both.
I'll wait for the closing remark.
Big motion, comments? Given there's none, I have some notes, Counselor Chamsak.
Well, when we look at the buoyant alert, the only thing that I really see. Um, is with the title, the emergent reliable app, I mean, it is also. Used for more of a communication base as well, and I don't know if, uh. Amendment on maybe a title change or something. Would be appropriate if I had to pick something.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, um, I agree, I noticed on the agenda mentions emergency alert reliable app. But the policy just mentions emergency reliable app. It's not, it's missing the alert portion of that, and I also wasn't, wasn't really sure what the reliable. In the title meant, what that refers to, um, I did look up buoyant alert and it mentions it's a multipurpose communication service app. Um, so I'm wondering about the. Only leaving it as an emergency when we do mention if a bridge is out or you know, the road is, there's construction or. You know, smoke is creating problems or something like that, so. Um, I also have a concern and thank you for bringing that up, that the title doesn't seem to quite match. What we're, what we're doing with this app.
So. When I looked at this, um, and I know this has been on the agenda for review by us for almost a year worth of time. Um, I think it's important that we take time to get it right and over the course of that time and the large gaps between when we first saw it and later saw it. I think my thinking has changed a little bit, and so, um, I think we should take time to get it right and work to continue to improve the quality of our policies in general. And with some, you know, learning that's happened, uh. More recently, I would, uh, urge you to reject the policy and instead return it to administration for review. Um, in conjunction with the fire chief and the DEM. To rewrite it as more of a governing document. When I read this and you know, when I was reading it in preparation for the meeting today, um. It's, uh, it, it seems to me to have too many procedural elements in it, and so I would prefer to see admin. Take another go at it with the employees and staff the CIO has now. To rewrite it as a document of governing principles, strip it of the procedural element. And, uh, as much as admin needs a procedure recorded, I don't think it should be up to us to get into the nitty gritty of that. The other. Um, item that's in there is I'm not even convinced that our policy should make specific reference to a third party software. I think that, uh. You know, while I know I supported sending this to council with further reflection, I think it does require more work. So I'm, I'm going to vote to reject it. Cause I think again, we should set the high level. Principles of what it should do, the mechanics of whether it's buoyant alert or. Nine, you know, pick another name, um, alertable. I think we have to keep that out of policy and really. Say, um. Really say this, you know, our policy is that we have an app that can connect with people on an urgent basis and. Outline some, some of the conditions which we might do that, but. Getting into. The names of the people who have to have it and the CIO has to have a backup and I. I think that's a process that doesn't belong in policy. In my opinion, Counselor Anderson, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Um. When I reviewed this again, and I, I know we've seen it at committee of the whole and I supported sending it to council then too, um. But when I reviewed it again, it seemed to have a lot of procedural elements included. And while those procedural elements maybe should have been included more in the regional emergency management plan. I don't think they belong in the policy here. Uh, so just upon further review, I thought. Maybe this isn't quite the policy that we need. It's too much procedure, not just governing.
Counselors. Capitanic. Wallach. Menz. Gerlock. No comments? Join, just if you pop your mic on so that Camille can hear you, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I can't hurt to revert, review it, if that many people have concerns with it, then. It would be appropriate to review it.
I think we're getting better over time, right? Like you watch the evolution of what we do. What we did day one, what we do in day. Seven hundred and what? Um, okay. Counselor. Counselor Menz, floor is yours.
Excuse me, I, I guess, uh. This policy was at the policy review, right? And we all looked at it and everything like that, so. So. Now it's coming forward to be. To be adopted and all of a sudden we're sending it back. To. Tear it apart again. And, uh. I don't know why we keep going back and forth. Like it, 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 it seems like. And then, then there is some policies you want to talk about and bang, we can't. All of a sudden, so it's, it's like, it kind of drives me crazy, but. I, I agree, and I guess, uh. Little point to ponder for administration is from now on, take a policy and totally tear it down and bring it back to us, please, cause. That's all we keep doing is, uh, policy comes forward and we say, nope. All of a sudden, it's not good enough and bang, send it back, so. So take every procedure that you can out of every policy and let's go. Thank you.
Counselor Cromwell, final word is.
To you, I very much agree with Counselor Menz, uh, great words coming from across the table. And I do agree with the Reeve that the term buoyant alert. Being written right into. This could be a bit of an issue. That organization could go bankrupt, there could be a massive change, and by making that more generic as to. A. App, a process and taking the name out of there might be a good amendment. So I would support bringing this back one more time for. For review with the. You know, good staff the county has and take it from there, but really, we've been. Dealing with this for far too long.
On the question of the adoption of the motion that policy six, eight, one, five be adopted as presented, all those in favor? Opposed?
I.
The count is one and eight and the motion is defeated. Next item is seven point one. This item is, uh, looks like the reconsideration of the unanimous decision made in October of twenty twenty-three.
Wow, actually.
And after having discussed this at at least seven public meetings.
Um, Chair, if I may. Um, it's not a reconsideration request, the, um.
There can be no. The substance of the motion ultimately. Leads to reopening of a date debate and contradicts the approved policy, while the proposal mentions five point one C. It fails to mention six point four point I. Which is the section dealing with the review of policy. So it really, the substance of this is to reconsider. You cannot do indirectly what you can't do directly, like this is really, we're looking to. So if we think that it's not a reconsideration, then approve it.
It's definitely a point of information when you refer to six point four. Please, please state what that says.
It's in the policy, you can look at it in your book right there.
Let's go there.
So this is, um.
Cause this is not a reconsideration at all, this is, uh, this is following a policy with the council.
Council members need to accept. That in a democratic environment, all decisions don't go your way. And regardless of the strengths of one's arguments. It can and often happens that. The votes on a different view prevail. This is the basis of any democratic institution, positions are debated. Information is cited and arguments are heard and a decision is made. Which often results in some who are prevailing and some who. May need to reexamine their arguments and determine what have been, what might have been lacking. In this case, this came forward unanimously, so decisions made this in this way should be respected and accepted. A decision legitimately made. Is really one. That is expected to be taken as a decision to council and not one that's open to continuous discussion and debate. That is not the essence of democracy and. It's the role of the chair to preserve order and decorum and to continue forward, we. The motion contradicts policy, it amounts to reopening the policy. And I think we need to remember it passed unanimously after seven open meetings. Um, for many months. Counselors have a duty to read and understand. The policy when you're approving it, not three months later.
And I will challenge the chair's decision once again, as this is not a reopening of a policy, it's actually following the policy as the policy is written. So if the chair would like to not follow the policy, then we're going into.
Your order, the, the policy was just approved.
Yes, so we should go forward and following the policy.
Okay, so Counselor Holland thinks that we should, uh, is challenging the chair's decision that this is a reconsideration. Of the policy. Um, those who would view this as not a reconsideration, vote I now. Okay. And those considering it a reconsideration?
I.
Okay, the, okay, so the, um. Counselor Holland's challenge is successful and we will not consider it a reconsideration, even though. So then we'll open the floor to discussion. Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Who asked for this to come forward?
I asked for it to come forward because it's a reconsideration.
And it is not a reconsideration, as a matter of fact, I will carry forward with this then, and as the RFD clearly states. We have a responsibility to this policy that was adopted. The responsibility now is to follow. One of the points in this particular policy, which is five point one C, which states council shall, not may, we must. Engage the services of a third party to review this policy in accordance with the terms of reference that are specified by elected officials. Therefore, um, as far as. I can see the recommendation is to direct administration to obtain three recommendations. And estimates for third party review options regarding policy two thousand nine, five point one C. And present them at the committee of the whole meeting, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Hey, other comments? Counselor Anderson?
Yeah. Um, as it was noted by the chair. This policy was reviewed at six committee of the whole meetings and one council meeting in. Open session. And in the August tenth committee of the whole meeting. Interim CIO Vincent had actually included in the draft. Policy. Uh, which municipalities were used for comparisons to. When creating this policy and what the target was in comparison to their. Uh, compensation and therefore I believe that. A thorough review has already been done and. This, a third party review would not be. Required until midterm of the next. Council.
Other comments, Counselor Menz, Counselor Cromwell. It's Gerlock. Capitanic, you have the floor.
Thank you to that, yeah, I understand it as it can be reviewed, um, and should be reviewed by each term, um. And. Personally, I, I, I look at all of the examples that have been brought forward by our, uh, past interim CEO. And I believe our current CEO, uh, brought us some more examples. Of neighboring municipalities that we're, um, very much in line with and or in the middle. And it's not that I don't think things should be reviewed, I think this is a great. Um. Thing to have written in, but when it hasn't even gone really into effect, like we've just started using it, it's pilot project. Paying someone to do that review when they really have nothing to review yet, doesn't make sense. And that's why I would see that as it like per term review. You're going to pay a lot of money to get someone to tell you if you're in line with your neighbors. I feel we already know we are right now, if that changes in two to four years and we need to pay someone to tell us where to be. If we're still at this table, if the next council might have to do that, but it just seems a little bit, uh, jumping the gun to me and, and. I know that these things, uh. Are valuable and worth the money, but I'm not willing to spend the money yet, uh, we haven't even really seen how this policy is going to play out.
Counselor Cromwell, floor is yours.
I would actually, uh, like to put our CIO on the spot and get his professional opinion of someone who has dealt with issues like this in the past. Uh, what is your recommendation?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I wasn't here for most of the discussion on, um. Uh, remuneration for council, that happened for a long before I got here, I was really here for the last five percent of the discussion. Um. I'm more familiar with a system where, um, uh. Council does use either a, a third party consultant. Or I'm even familiar with systems where they employ a steering committee of residents, believe it or not, in some. Places, I think even, uh, one of our neighbors does, so, um. It, it's because remuneration for counselors can be a highly political item, it's, let's, let's not kid ourselves, um, however, um. Our job is to follow the policy that council adopts. I'm familiar with all the systems, you can set your own, you can use an outside consultant. Um, it's not for me to judge what's fair, that's for someone else to judge.
Thank you, if I may.
Yeah, the floor is yours.
Um. Let me maybe, I can re, rephrase what I meant, CIO. Under the recommendation on the RFD to direct administration to obtain three recommendations and estimates for third party. Hearing that, but hearing the argument some of my peers had. Do you believe that the information provided by? Previous interim CIO met that qualification or that?
Well, to be fair, the policy wasn't in place at that time, so you can't ask him to meet qualification of something that didn't exist, like, then.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to comment on it, uh, actually, I have no, no, uh, opinion on that, that's up to council. Uh, but I would just point out that should council vote on this and. If it were to be approved, February twentieth is completely impossible. No one's going to. Uh, it would have to be a different timeframe, that's all, if council wished to go this route. Uh, it's just not going to happen in one week.
You, you took the part B away from me right there.
In terms of those who haven't spoken, Counselor Chamsak, Menz. Counselor Wallach. No, shaking your head, Counselor Gerlock. The voice of reason?
It's, it's. It's a very big move. And. It just seems like it's a bigger move and. I guess it should be done maybe in a little smaller increments. And. If we look at comparables, we compare ourselves to other jurisdictions for, for, uh. Remuneration. But then on the other hand, should we then compare ourselves as far as taxation is concerned? That we're so far behind on our, our pipe and power and our. M and E. We're four or five miles behind our neighbors, should we just jump right up to the same level as they're at, there we're. We're inching our way up and trying to get a little closer. So we should use the same process. Kind of on, on different ma, on similar matters.
Other comments? Counselor Menz, your hand is going down?
I guess I'll chime in. Um. Even, even before we. I know I voted on it to, to pass this policy. And, uh. But prior to that, I, I asked council to. To send this back to get. Better clarification on it and that, and, and I'm still standing by. By my thoughts of this is to, to send it back and, and, uh. For the review and, and see how it works out. Just because it is a very contentious issue. I want to make sure that it's done right, that, uh. That, uh. I have no problem with saying, you know what, let's hold back and send it back, so. Even though I voted on it when, when it first came up. Or, or the last time it came up, I voted on it and, and I still have the. Still have the thoughts in my mind that it, it should go back for a review just to. Just to cross our Ts and dots our, dot our Is, uh, before we. Implement it, but that's my thoughts.
Counselor Chabsik. Counselor Holland, you get the last word, so you don't get to jump in a second time. I think we, um. Council examined this and. I think that this really serves nothing to, nothing more than. Creating additional administrative work. Uh, and disruption and disharmony at our table, even if there is a review of information. Um, and approved by, you know, we, we, we reviewed information and approved it barely three months ago. So we've done this work, we now have a policy in place that is forward looking, not a backwards looking policy. That puts in place a future review date at the midpoint of the term which we are passed. So this is nothing more than. An attempt to, uh, reverse a decision that was unanimously approved. What can be the result? Of a review? Except. To reconsider the policy, which as you know, requires a two thirds vote. For me, this is a waste of time and money. It's a waste of energy, what's your point?
Point of order.
What point of the bylaw am I off of?
My point of order here is your accusations are uncalled for and not necessary, I take offense.
The point is not well taken. Points of order about departure from the bylaw and to say that it is a waste of time and money to engage this. Without knowing whether we'd reopen the debate. Um, we have more important big picture things to work on. And after months of work. It does not seem to be a good use of resources to keep churning on an internal issue. What actually is the expected outcome? We do the review and then what? Can we achieve a two thirds vote to reopen the policy? I don't know, cause we won't test it. I think we should reject this and get on with the more important things that we need to do. As we all know, there's no shortage of those. Now, is there anybody who hasn't spoken that would like a final word, counselors, Chamsak or Wallach? Counselor Holland. You get the final word before the question.
Thank you, once again, I find that your argument is, uh, very offensive.
Going to not make personal attacks.
Uh, I find it very offensive, uh, there is no attempt to reverse a decision. As a matter of fact, we have a policy that's been adopted, yes, I made a mistake. When I first, uh, looked at that in October and this unanimous decision, more information was given to us. Which of course opened up a whole new. Look through another lens, um, we have a very big responsibility to our public. We have a responsibility in our council code of conduct. To make sure that we adhere to policies, procedures and bylaws, and we shall uphold these policies, procedures and bylaws. We adopted this policy. It now specifies that we need to follow it, and when we follow it, we follow all points, we don't pick and choose. So there is no reason to be fearful of a reversal of a decision, because the policy also mentions. That if we receive a review, it won't go into effect until the following term, so there is really no concern. Of any reversal, and I really do take offense to that, Reeve Hall. The other point as well, the other point as well that I would like to make.
For clarity, you don't get to make personal jumps. Now you can finish your comments. And then we're going to vote.
I took offense to what you said.
Are you finished speaking?
No, I'm not finished speaking.
Stay on point and on motion.
The bullying it needs to stop in this room and I would appreciate it if it did. Thirteen point one, remuneration and expenses in our council code of conduct. Members are stewards of public resources and shall avoid waste, abuse and extravagance in the use of public resources. As far as I'm concerned, if you're not worried about that around this table, then a review. As far as I'm concerned, if you're not worried about that around this table, then a review and following of the policy is what is required. I highly recommend that everyone have a really good look and make sure that we are following and adhering to what we agreed to. Five point one C specifies a third party review is required. Third party does not mean some uh administrative reports. That have come forward with some comparisons from our C A Os. It comes from a third party.
As a point of order, as a point of order, the uh the review is required at the midpoint of the term, so that we're clear.
As again, the policy is very specific and I would like to ask through the chair to the C A O. What timeframe would be required? Because as I, when I remember speaking to um, you had mentioned it wouldn't be too much of a problem, but I'm seeing now that that is so. Would it the twenty? Last uh council meeting of the month be sufficient or what timeframe would be required so that we can maybe look at an amendment at the motion from the twentieth?
Uh, Mister Chairman, um. It really. It's not a huge exercise, but I am not a consultant. I don't know how fast they can. Respond to us. So some of them need three weeks. Uh, some of them, they 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 don't drop it. They can't drop what they're doing. They're already working for other clients, so. Um, I would say in the order of six weeks would be a fair timeframe to allow proper response by a consultant.
So in amendment, this would we, would it be better to say rather than present them at the committee of the whole February twentieth to present when?
At the next committee hall?
When the C A O is ready to present?
Yeah, as as soon as I've received proposals, exactly. Something to that effect is as soon as possible, but. Um. We can't control the consultants and how fast they can respond. That's my only caveat.
Okay. Okay. So do we put that amendment on the table or has the motion not been read by the chair therefore?
The motion was read, so we can, I mean, if there's unanimous consent to amending it to uh, would would you be happy with the next committee of the whole? For the first committee of the whole that's available?
Mister Chair, the first committed hole is about four weeks. Uh, no, let's see, we we have.
Cause we, one's next week and then next one is April.
I think that's plenty of time, Mister Chair. I I don't see why I couldn't get responses if the motion were passed.
Is there any objection to just amending the counselor's motion to um? To changing the language to the next. Committee of the whole after. Uh, at the next committee of the whole after February twenty first? Or after February twenty ninth, just something passed after April first? Counselor Holland, is that suitable to you?
That's fine. Thank you.
Seeing no amount uh objections to that, we'll consider that to be an amendment that's approved with unanimous consent, Ms. Blair. Okay, proposed by Counselor Hall. Okay, Counselor Hall, the floor remains yours.
Pardon me, thank you. I think we've uh. Made it very clear that I think the importance of following policies and following our council code of conduct is extremely important.
On the question of the adoption of the motion to direct admin to obtain three recommendations and estimates for third party review options regarding policy two oh nine. Five C and present them at the committee, the next committee of the whole after. February twenty first um. All those in favor? Opposed?
Right.
Account is five and four and the motion is adopted. Item. Okay.
I'd like to uh, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to ask a question of the C A O before I do so. Is that right?
Sure.
Uh, through the chair. Um. When we uh. Enlist a third party um to do a review. Do we need to give them like a a specific outline of what we want? Like if we want extra things reviewed? Can we do that?
Mister Chairman, that's exactly right. Yeah, so I'd have to develop a terms of reference. Um, and I probably base it on what other communities have done, very general. Um. And. By proxy of that motion, you've kind of left the terms of reference up to me unless counsel wants to take that back.
I would like to make motion then. May I ask for actually a point of order here as well as the point of information?
Point first point of order?
The terms of reference is mentioned in the policy that needs to be determined by counsel, which is why there is, it's already that policy. Statement is already in. So five point one C mentions uh the third party to review this policy in accordance with the terms of reference.
Point of order because you were not departing from the procedural bylaw, but that would be an argument against. What might get proposed?
Okay, well, I'm I'm just gonna put this out there because my brain's turning. And I just think in fairness of um the information that we have from the past and then what's going to be going into the future. As I said, we don't have anything to really go on right now. If we are going to have this review, I would like to make a motion that we add in. That the reviewers. Take a past look at the last two years and the actual money spent on conferences versus counselors that attended. Cause I would like to see in the budget an actual breakdown of if people have registered for hotels and conferences and then not use them. And they were spent and that was not reported to the public. I would like to see that. Black and white as part of that review.
So do you think that that's really um part of developing the terms of reference and would the? Procedurally, the the. Maybe the would would it be to?
Transparency if this is all about.
In the terms of reference, I'm just wondering if it would be better to. That sounds like a component of terms of reference, so would there be any wisdom in pushing to the cow meeting on? Uh, the twentieth of February, a discussion about the terms of reference. Which is more appropriate place for a. Discussion and then people can have a conversation about developing them. Cause I I think to. Engage in a right now, a discussion on what terms do we develop? No, but you know, we haven't had the opportunity to think that through and prepare as a group. Putting that to the February twentieth to develop the terms of reference would be. As Counselor Holland points out, the policy requires counsel to develop the terms of reference.
Can we put it off to another meeting? I will be absent on the twentieth due to the fact that I'm registered for a conference that I am actually attending.
Well, you can propose we develop the terms of reference whenever you want.
Yes, okay. A future cow, not the twentieth. Is that an amendment?
So you're proposing a motion to uh.
Adding to the review, a review of all.
To to have counsel develop terms of reference at a committee of the whole meeting after February twentieth?
Sure. I wonder, I want it all reviewed. In the terms of reference. Make it one big review.
A counselor Capitanic has made a motion that the. Counsel refer the discussion topic, develop. Refer a discussion topic to uh develop terms of reference for the review. To a committee, the whole meeting after February twentieth. So we refer a discussion. Of counsel to develop the terms of reference at a committee of the whole meeting after February twentieth. Is there any comments on that? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Holland, second.
Thank you. Um, just logistically speaking. Uh, administration, if we're not having this discussion about the terms of reference until what would probably be the April meeting. Administration will not have. The proposals for the analysis until. Probably the June committee of the whole meeting, so. But because the motion, I believe, stated after February twenty first. Just just to make sure that everybody's aware that. We can't expect administration to have the proposals at the same meeting that we're. Determining the terms of reference. And if we can't establish terms of reference in one meeting, if we have to. Forward it to the next committee of the whole meeting, it'll push the whole process.
Right.
Counselor Holland, your own deck.
Thank you. Um, I was going to mention the exact same thing as as Counselor Anderson had mentioned. I also am struggling a little bit here because we're we're back and forth as to if someone's here or not here. Uh, whether or not we have a meeting and it's usually depending um how it rolls. Whether or not that that happens, so it's basically being told that if you can't be here, you can't be here. And then it's unfortunate, however. Great, that's fine.
Here to talk about it.
Well, unfortunately.
You can propose to amend the day.
Can I finish speaking, please, without interruption? Thank you. Um, I understand the motion was made. However, again, you could be sick that day as well. So whether or not the motion is. Whether or not the motion has been made by a particular individual who cannot be here, as far as I'm concerned, we um do not need to worry about that. Because we don't do it in any for everybody. It doesn't happen. Equally across the board that that goes on. There's also an insinuation here that there has been money spent on counselors that have not attended.
So we're in terms of.
It's information that someone is.
I'm gonna stop you. We're speaking to the motion, please.
I'm speaking to the motion of these terms of reference.
Was to develop terms of reference at a committee of the whole meeting after February twentieth.
Thank you. Um, and once again, um, as it was mentioned. There is concern on those terms of reference on what would should be looked into. If that information is a concern, it can be asked for and provided to you without a term of reference. Yes, it can. That is information that belongs to the the county. You have an ability to ask for it and it be presented to you. So as far as I'm concerned, the terms of reference need to be established to be able to go forward with the previous motion that was made. Therefore, there are examples of terms of reference from several municipalities. I have provided some here in the R F D. That are very um excellent, as far as I'm concerned, that that would apply to what we need and what we're looking for. Therefore, I believe that Fe- February twentieth should be the date that we discuss this and would like to put that amendment on the table.
Counselor Holland has moved to amend the motion to discuss terms of reference on February twentieth. Further discussion. C A O? Is it possible to get that on the?
Just for clarification, um, the wording of the motion. Um, is it counsel's intent that they would work on this at?
Well, I think.
Or would you would you prefer administration to at least present a straw model that you could? Start with and.
Is that the intent of your motion? They present a?
I think that would make the most sense, but I would like, like I said, a full inclusive review of.
So if if um you're looking for admin to provide a draft in, if your intent was that they provide a draft. Like, is is the idea that we will start from zero with a blank sheet of paper and talk about what terms of reference we want? Or is it that we will have admin say, here's the best practice, let's start from this and talk about? And I I assume it's the latter.
Mr. Chairman, it would be normal for us to do ninety five percent of the. Of the drafting and let counsel worry about the main aspects that you want included, but it's our job to draft language.
Do you have time to do it before next week's?
It may be a handout item. It may not make the agenda, but we could certainly have something as a handout item or. Uh, emailed um to counsel before the meeting, but we should have time to do that. Uh, but it may not be in the actual. Cow agenda package, so we'll see what we can do.
Okay. That's Cromwell. Do you have any comments or Counselor Gerlick? Decline, Counselor Gerlick? Uh, I I mean, honestly, um. The original motion was was made with a date that suited the mover. Um, as the mover, I think there is no urgency to doing this. It's been pointed out and is part of our discussion that. That none of this takes effect till later, so there is no giant rush and no re. Think about it in advance, so I I don't think the amendment is necessary, but I would support the original motion. To um. Have admin develop some terms of reference for counsel to engage a discussion at a uh. At a committee of all meeting in the future. On the main. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Counselor uh. Chamsik or Minz or Wallock? Minz?
I do like the idea of of administration bringing us uh. Kind of like a a basis point to to go off of and not um. This is. A re- remuneration policy. This is not to. I don't think to drought somebody for. Spending something to to. I don't know where that actually fits into this policy, I think.
Like it under conferences.
Well, well, um, you don't have the floor answer.
Well, whether you went to the conference or not.
I think it's important for the public.
Counselor Capitanic, your um.
It's under the policy. I want the policy reviewed the whole thing.
Okay. You get the final word at on the main motion. Counselor Minz, the floor remains yours. Sorry for.
Yeah, I'm just I'm just lost on that point where all of a sudden we're we're. We're 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 talking about a remuneration. We're not talking about. If there's got to be another way of finding out. Whether you were there or not. I don't know if it's actually. The way I'm thinking, it doesn't even actually. Should be in this policy. It's that's that's another. That's another. That's another policy as far as I care. It's it's or or if you're looking for for. Numbers or something like that, ask. I I just don't understand why. What some policies we can we can have so convoluted and the next policy can be just straightforward. I think we got a policy of a remuneration here. And keep it simple. I don't know. That's the way I look, but I'm I'm all for. Uh, getting this terms of reference done, getting this policy figured out and. Cause we have some expensive counselors sitting on the table right now, ready to go, so. I don't know. And let's get this figured out.
On the question of the adoption of the amendment to change the date to uh February twentieth, all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor. Chamsik, how did you vote? Affirmative, so the count is five and four. The date is changed to February twentieth. Develop terms of reference at a committee of the whole on February twentieth. Counselor Capitanic is a mover of the main motion. You have final word?
Thank you. Um, the reason that I made this motion is because I believe we're going to open up and review this policy. That is in effect, no matter when we review it or not, it continues as it is. Um, I believe then we should be thorough and looking at the entire thing and I would like to see a review. Of how it was written for our conference budgets. I would like to see. A check and balance for those who register for expensive events and don't attend, how? It is going to be um calculated and costed and that the public know that their money was used for good or not. And I think that if we're gonna open this policy, that's my number one thing I want to see transparent is our attendance, point of order that we attend.
Okay, do you want to state your point, Counselor?
Yes, I would like to.
Remember, just just as a clarification before you start, points of order are a departure from the procedural bylaw.
What I want to see.
If you don't like what she's saying, that's not a departure.
Oh, that seems to happen quite a bit around this table.
Okay, on the question of the adoption of the motion to refer. A discussion. On the to develop the terms of reference at a committee of the whole meeting on February twentieth, all those in favor?
I I just can't.
Oppose? So we're referring this to discussion of the the motion is to refer a discussion to develop the terms of reference at committee of the whole on February twentieth. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Gerlick, you need to vote. Okay, so nine and zero?
Open it up.
Item number seven point six is healthcare consultation.
Reeve, I'm requesting a five minute break for the table.
We normally do it at ten thirty. If you need to leave, you can please. Uh, they've item seven point six is um. Healthcare consultations. This is on the agenda because obviously um having written it, I know that there's no. Clear recommendation. Uh, because of that and because of the timing that this couldn't show up at a committee, the whole uh. Um, I think it's appropriate. We open the floor for discussion on this one before a motion. A couple of bits of information I can share with you along the way. The North Northeast Mares and Reeves, which is the North Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity. They that group feels strongly that uh as a region, we should be advocating for a separate health region in the northeast. Urban solutions for rural problems are no longer acceptable. Um. And so there, you know, there's a lot of sentiment that we have. Decision makers that aren't really in touch with the region making decisions for us. I have received just before the meeting, the authorization to release a letter. That was given to me in confidence to counsel, which I'll do later. But um. One of it's uh from one of the uh. Speaking on behalf of the physicians in our community. And it talks about the exponential increases in stress and workload that have related to. And it talks about the exponential increases in stress and workload that have related to the connect care rollout. Connect care doesn't work the same in rural areas as it does in urban areas. Um, I'm not sure that I'm the right person to try to explain it, but uh often in the city, I think clinics can be AHS affiliated, so they have a direct attachment to connect care in rural areas. Um, the clinics are owned by the physicians you typically are often at least, and they have their own electronical rec- uh records at the clinic or electronic medical records. There's an interfacing software called C I C par and somehow that is supposed to connect the clinics to net care, which AHS connect care is supposed to talk with. And the data is supposed to flow back and forth, but it doesn't flow seamlessly and it creates a load of work. The um, some of the concern, I mean, clearly new systems create new work and they're slower. But the the concerns are around dramatically increased workload for rural physicians with countless redundancies. Um, the connect care does not work fluently with non-AHS family medical clinics. And the feeling is it creates an unfair administrative burden uh burden on um on our physicians. And so I think, you know, for me, the message out of this is we we need to be clear that we have our physicians back and that we we want to advocate for them. But um the the workload on our local physicians is is incredibly high right now because of the rolling closures in uh Smoky Lake, Boyle, Lacklavish, and there's some AHS protocol changes that allow uh nurses at those hospitals to phone the doctor on call and ask them for assistance, help, diagnosis, things that creates a uh can has the potential to create an undue level of risk for them. So that's kind of the summary of that. And and for me, I mean, I think it's prudent for us not to rush to formalize a position of our council, because again, we haven't had a lot of time to to discuss it. But uh so I I actually think we shouldn't take a firm position today, but that we should go to the meeting and listen and hear what is being said. But I also really believe that um this needs to be a choice of council rather than the default. So it's here so that we can choose. Do we want to, you know, not take a firm position or do we want to jump onto something? And with that, I'd like to open the floor to any discussion that happens.
Just first question, in person meeting, but I haven't been able to find your where it is, what the venue is or where it's at.
It's uh pre- it's you know, February fifteenth, pre-registration is required and I think.
Senior center?
I'd have to double check, counselor. It's in that microscopic weather. I mean, you you if you click on.
Start you email it to us.
Uh, I don't know if I emailed it or Counselor Wallock emailed it or. But I mean, it wouldn't be a hard thing to get an email of that out to everybody. So it's in Athabasca. Further questions? No, no, okay. I'll get you both and Counselor Captain at show after mics. Counselor Holland, floor shift.
Thank you. Um, as I was looking into this, the focusing uh main focus was primary care, acute care, continuing care, mental health and addiction. So my question would be uh maybe through the chair to the C O, if we know if F C S S is going to be taking part in this particular engagement, um, as I believe that they are the best to uh bring forward a lot of these issues um on on the county's behalf.
Mister Chair, I would have to consult and and report back.
Thank you.
Counsel Anderson, Capitanic. Wallock, Counsel Anderson.
I'm not in favor of council determining our position at this time. But I do encourage everybody to attend the session and been trying to encourage many community members to attend as well, and I look forward to being there and hearing from well, hearing what the intentions are from the G O A, as well as hopefully some concerns from some of our local healthcare workers. Uh, when they hear what the intentions are, and then after that, maybe we can touch base with our local community and create a position. If some advocacy work is required, but at this point, I just don't feel like I have enough of the details about what the plan is or what the concerns are related to that plan to really form a position to advocate one way or the other, so.
Counsel, Counsel Mins, oh, Counsel Wallock.
Yeah, I think I think the intent of these um town halls are just for gathering information and to see what's working. So I think if we just remain neutral and listen to what people on the ground are actually saying that are in healthcare, um, I know there's going to be a lot of them that are attending this meeting. So I think if we just go listen, see what they have to say and then come back and revisit it after.
Any further comments or would someone like to move a motion to accept for information? Counsel Cromwell has moved. Any further discussion, Counselor Holland?
Thank you. Can we include in that motion that admin promote the event through the county social media channels and um invite F C S S to also attend?
Is there any uh, I haven't read the motion, so any objection to the floor to that? So the motion in front of us is to direct admin to provoke the event through social media channels and to invite F C S S and further to accept for information. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion as stated, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Count is nine and zero. Motion is adopted. I don't think we can get through the next one in five minutes. Want a ten minute break? Reconvening at thirty-five minutes after? Next item of business is seven point seven, Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors. The um we've been invoked, again, the opportunity has been open to meet with the Minister of Transportation Economic Corridors. The office has asked if A, if we want to meet and B, if we want, if we do, we need to have a couple of topics. The uh recommendation, of course, is vague, so we should have a conversation around the things we may want to talk about. Counselor Cromwell, um, before we make a motion, let's have a second for everybody to put their opinion in and do you want to share some thoughts of what you think we should talk about?
Actually, I'm just looking for clarification to what I remembered. Uh, did we not speak about uh minister meetings and decide not to do any during this RMA session? Was that not something we talked about?
No, I think we talked about only going if we had something we wanted to talk about. It's my memory.
I recall it as we we wouldn't go for the quick fifteen minute meeting, but because we're so close to Edmonton, we try and book.
The city always provided a different perspective and um so this is here to discuss and we can this like, we can't. We can say no to this meeting.
I'm looking for clarification.
The C C O, do you want to share your thoughts on the ministerial meetings that occurred RMA?
Um, Mister Chairman, yeah, I mean, if we can get meetings at other times because we are close to Edmonton, absolutely. Um, if we can secure a meeting at RMA, um, if they have a spot, I would take that one too. Uh, just the perspective of uh that I expressed to the Reed is sometimes it's also just about relationship building. It's not about advocating for something or always showing up uh with cap in hand. Sometimes it's just relationship building and sometimes to express gratitude. We get uh, I certainly I I could speak from the administrative perspective. We got great service from some of these departments, like they are fantastic to work with and uh Counselor Mins and I were just talking about one. Um, so sometimes it's nice for the ministers to hear that, that um, their departments are valued. Um, they do great work and we'd like to build a relationship. That's all.
Counselor Cromwell, the floor remains yours.
I'm just looking at the number here right now. I'll ask to refer for a moment, please.
Counsel Mins?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I remember uh many, many years ago, uh council's always saying if if you get a chance to have a meeting with the ministers at at the RMA, you you jump on it. You 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 know exactly what our CEO was saying um. Like you said, even even to say thank you for for something which I would like to put on the agendas. There's a little bit more uh information regarding the the proposed water line to go out west. That actually uh the the province is actually working with us instead of leaving us in the dark. So it's 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 a great time to be able to go to them and say, hey, yeah, this is this is working awesome. So, you know, uh if this is the new way you guys are going, it's 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 gonna work. So, so, yep. But any, any, any of the uh, I remember when that was being discussed uh possibly not going to any meetings, I I sat back and I thought, you know, maybe we should be, even just to go and say hi. So, I think it's a good idea.
That's Crumwell.
I would be in agreeance with that, going in not to to go, hi, we need help, but to talk about what has been working. Uh, a little bit of relationship building with the minister and then take the opportunity as we are so close to Edmonton to book a meeting at a later date when we're not number twelve out of eighty-two with their handout uh during the RMA and have a proper sit down discussion with the minister would be far more conducive to a well use of time. But on that note, if we were to make a list of things that we want to talk about. If we were to make a list of things that we want to talk about, I would like to talk about the new highway six eighty-six. Being built between Fort McMurray. And Red Earth Creek. As that will be a huge deduction in the amount of traffic on Highway sixty-three, which fits very much into the first bullet point. On page sixty-seven of your agenda. And with that. The provinces announcement of government owned rest stops along the highway. Uh, which will take away a lot of the business from small communities such as grassland and wandering river, which rely on. Highway traffic to survive and what kind of detriment this is going to be for our rural communities. That is definitely something I would. Wish to have a good bit of speaking about.
Council Holland, I thought, are you waving?
Yeah, thank you, um. I liking the list, of course, of, you know, definitely that we need to um express our gratitude and and appreciation for. The relationships that we built with the government and the work that's happening there, um but I. I realize it's only fifteen minutes, I'm very much in favor as well of creating another uh meeting, being that we are close in proximity. However, I do think that many of these items are also. Very important to highlight to maybe either, you know, this is the things that we would like to discuss at a future meeting or whichever, but Highway thirteen. Uh, for me is huge, um the SIP grant application, of course, for Alpak Bridge, huge, and so is Highway sixty-three rescue, um as much as. The items that you've brought forward, I would like to see a bit more information on that because I'm also. Yeah, I I. I would like to see a bit more information on that, just because opening the north is not a bad thing, um so I just kind of like to see. See where we're at right on on that one, but um also. In it, who's all going to be in attendance, this is one I would definitely like to um attend as well when uh this meeting is. Is up and coming.
Counselor Chams.
I totally agree, um uh through the chair, uh uh council Cromwell has any information about especially the. Government uh rest stops, if you wouldn't mind just forwarding that along to council.
Absolutely. Council Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I know it's the upcoming committee of the whole meeting, there is a discussion slated for. Different briefing documents that we would like administration to prepare in advance of the RMA convention for us. So maybe some of these are ideas that we should discuss next week and then once we have a little bit more information on. The specific topics we can decide, but. Um, maybe just submit these three.
Two.
Two of these as uh. Discussion items to the minister now and accept the meeting invite and then we can discuss what other meetings we would want to schedule. At that time, once we discuss the topics at hand.
So I'm looking at these, I see you, um. And I, you know, and I know I suggested them when we uh this came up with the CIO, the step grant, while it's, you know, critical in our. In our uh. Region in terms of the economic impact of that bridge. I'm. I'm kind of mixed mind on it, if we're trying to keep it to three topics, that one to me would probably be the lowest priority, only because of the three that are on the sheet. Only because um we won't have an answer on STIP yet, so I don't know if it needs to, we don't know that they've said yes or said no, so it might be a. A very brief reminder or comment that this is a really critical project and we've got it in the queue and we're hoping that your department looks favorably on it, but. There's not a lot to say about it because we. I I mean, I'm assuming there'll be money coming for it when the time comes. Highway sixty-three, we've talked about so many times at this table, I think, you know, the it. There's no doubt about how critical that service is to the region and uh. And the funding arrangement is a, you know, one of the. High priority pressing issues, I believe, for our council that we actually should be spending time focusing on. And and while I think the comments about six eight six and the rest stops are important, I don't think we've talked about them enough to to bring them up at a a meeting. So close in time. And I I would love to see, you know, an agenda items at committee, the whole where we could actually talk about those things as a group. And so that we're all well informed and then we can speak knowledgeably to them because I'm sure they have a big impact. The Highway eighteen though for me, um. You know. The Martin Hills and the oil projects that are going on there, maybe one of the greatest economic opportunities of our lifetime for this region in terms of new opportunities. And focusing on bringing that traffic into our county so that the service businesses that that are going to service that industry are are located here. And in in, you know, this region, a lot of the oil is still being trucked out. Um, I think there's uh. For me, that's, that's one that. We've kind of been. Maybe a little uh quieter on and I think we. You know, speaking to it would be, would be uh important. So by if I were my, you know, top. Three would be. The Highway sixty-three rescue eight thirteen and the waterline. I I really like the idea of going in and saying, we appreciate how your department has worked with the county and, you know, the uh. In an air, it's it's timely because of the uh forecast drought in the south. And the others are are all things that are important and ongoing, but they're also things that are ongoing, there'll be more opportunities to speak to them. Counselor Gerlock, you look like you're eager to. Chime in or counsel. Okay, um, okay, sorry, so. Council Chams, Council Wallack, and then we'll come back to Council Gerlock.
I just wanted to make sure with um. Through the Church Council Anderson, I heard that correctly, the briefing documents at Cal, I just, this sounds really loud today.
There there'll be briefing, there there's a discussion on briefing document coming up at committee, the whole for what council would like to see.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council Wallack, floor is yours.
Thanks, um are we able to set up a uh meeting with a parliamentary secretary secretary for uh economic development, um Emily? Shane Getson.
I I I see no reason why we can't ask, CIO.
Um, we can certainly ask.
Okay, he just spoke at the last um Alberta hub meeting and is very engaged with all of this, um. All the corridors and stuff that are opening up, so I think to bring to him. Bring attention to the eight thirteen and and Martin Hills and and what's happening there, I think would be beneficial.
It it may also, uh, Penny Yow, who's the parliamentary secretary for Northern Rural Economic Development, may be a good. Choice to, those might be ones we should be asking for at the cow, um. Baking onto that, but the chair is probably making a note that they'll come up. Um, is there, Council Gerlock, I'd cut you off, did you want to say something on the microphone, so that because concert?
You said that I looked like I had something to say and I said looks can be deceiving. Or I didn't have anything to add.
What's um generally, so there's a lot of support at the table for the eight thirteen project, the highway thirteen. What, what do we? Would those eight waterline eight thirteen and eight thirteen? Would there be anybody that thinks those shouldn't be the the ones we at least initially send in, we can maybe refine that discussion next week? Council Holland, that meets your needs. From the right side. Seeing heads nod, is there someone willing to make a motion to direct admin to? Uh, okay, so Council men's is going to move that we directed men to ask for a meeting with the Minister of Transportation Economic Corridors. The discussion topics would be the waterline. Uh, extension to the west. Highway sixty-three rescue grant and contract and Highway eight thirteen. And then. Before RMA, we will obviously also collectively have to maybe discuss those as a group in a little bit more detail. Hey, does everybody understand the motion? CIO.
Mister Chairman, that was the uh, uh, the second part was during RMA or at any time?
Council. This one was during RMA, but I mean, I'm. What's your advice, CIO? I mean, at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter to me.
Well, we could ask for RMA, if they say no, then we'd like a time. Not at RMA.
RMA or anytime that's convenient to the minister. Is that agreeable, Councilmen's? Okay, on the question of the adoption of the motion to direct RMA to seek a meeting with the Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridors at RMA or any agreeable time to the minister with the topics being. Uh, Highway sixty-three rescue grant and contract, Highway eight thirteen and uh the waterline to the west. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We are on item number eight point one. Uh, just as a reference regarding seven point six, the session for the healthcare uh consultation is now full. But there is a waiting list, so if you still want to go, you can. Put your name on. The waiting list. Eight point one is council correspondence, I added this to the list. Um. Because there's one item and it's a. It's a letter that we received from our neighbors. And in reading that, uh, the sentiments in there, I thought made a lot of sense, but I I wondered about council's appetite to consider this as a. Something a resolution we should uh consider advocating through Pembina and RMA. Counselor, and someone want to make a motion, Council Anderson?
Yeah, make a motion to direct administration to draft. A resolution. Related to increase uh advocacy for increasing the volunteer firefighter tax credit from three thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. To be reviewed at the. April Committee of the Hall Meeting.
So the motion is to direct admin to draft a resolution. Regarding advocacy to increase the volunteer tax credit from three million to, sorry. Uh, three thousand to ten thousand for review at the April Committee of the Hall Meeting. Any further discussion? Council Holland, floor is yours.
Um, just curious why we would be taking um the letter. Back to many of the whole rather than just directing administration. To go ahead and request, very similar to what the Athbasque, uh Town of Athbasque did, so I'm curious why we would.
It's because the motion is to draft a resolution. To go to Pembina and RMA.
Sorry, I missed that, it's very, that's, that's, that's very annoying, thank you.
Yep, sorry, and and. I wasn't loud enough maybe when I repeated it, but it's a, it's a resolution for RMA.
Thank you, no, and I appreciate that and I appreciate also just a shout out to uh the Town of Athbasque for their letter. And uh jumping on this advocacy, I think it's extremely important, so thanks to them.
Hey. Is there any further comments? On the question of the adoption of the motion to direct admin to draft a resolution regarding advocacy to increase volunteer tax credit from three thousand to ten thousand. And presented to council at the April Committee of the Hall, all those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Calendars are next, it's item eight point one, I have a note on mine that says, CIO. Do you have any items regarding strat plan you want to discuss?
Yes, um, Mister Chairman, um. I'm about to engage the services uh of a consulting service that'll help us with the governance refresher, as you know, council. Uh, passed a resolution for us to uh. Uh, organize a three community governance refresher with the village and town, they confirmed they are interested, so. I would ask council to see if they can figure out a date or two that we could flip to them and see if we can make one work. Uh, that would be an all all day session, so, uh, and secondly, um, same thing, uh, we would follow up with the. Strap planning, just council, uh, just, just our council, not the other communities, of course, so a full day at least, so if you could look into your calendars. Um, a little ways into the future, of course, uh, it's not going to happen overnight, but. And see if we can narrow down some dates and then flip them back to our consultant. Uh, to see if that works as well. So I'd ask, I'd I'd ask you to try to find two of each. Two for each of those events.
Two dates for each uh in the. April time range?
Uh, April would kind of be great for the governance refresher and if the uh, if the strap planning had to wait till May, then that's great too, um. March is a very busy month and we've, we're kind of booked up already.
Does everybody have access to their calendar or do you want us to just um send you a couple of dates and you'll sort out?
Yes, Mister Chairman, unless we can do it here, you know, what we could do is, uh, I don't know if we've used Doodle to get dates before, but it's a. Uh, it's a tool that's really easy to use, we could probably put together something, send it out to council and see what works for you is, is that fair?
Council. Chams.
Um, so far, I mean, it's still pretty early and with about everybody's committees being in, um. Just proposing the ninth, tenth and the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Uh, for a couple idea dates. April. Oh. Right, I wrote that Monday, okay, so maybe the tenth and eleventh.
Would it be more appropriate, Reed, to go with what the CIO said and put out a? A doodle calendar and that way we have time to look at all of our other calendars we may not have. You know, put into this calendar. And then to make a more informed decision than trying to book a month or two. Further ahead than we're looking at currently.
I think, I think it's okay though to give some general ideas like. First week of the month from a council perspective is usually pretty open. So that that one would have lots of potential. First week of April, as much as. Um, tenth is a. Tenth would. There's other conflicts on the tenth. But. So I think, um. So as much I agree with, I think, you know, Council Cromwell's idea, we should float it through, uh. But I think uh to give you some ideas, uh, you know, the first to the fifth, the eleventh, the twelfth of April. And potentially, what about the? Thirtieth or the first of uh April thirtieth, May first? Okay, so the call is already not working, so. May first, okay, so, and these again, you know, they don't have to be two days together, they can be one day space, one day, so potentially April thirtieth as a, as a. That's a a few to start and then.
Other, I guess, I guess, just regarding that, the doodle pool, it'll be like at a, end at a certain time, because we also have to take into account the town and. And the village, right?
No, correct, um, Mister Chairman, what I was hoping for was I could at least get a couple of choices from our council. And then flip it over and maybe we'll get one that works, right?
But it ultimately, we, I mean, we're doing this as our, I mean, I'm going to speak against that, we're we're doing this for our benefit. With an invite to them if it works, like I think. The priority is our own needs and. And if we can accommodate, great, but I. Not personally not keen to dance around a hundred dates to try to accommodate. The schedules of of our neighbors, because it it's much harder on their. This is for our benefit and if they can fit, it's, you're welcome to come, but this is the.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Now, let's go around the table for in terms of adding to the agenda, starting. Council Chams.
Uh, the only thing that I seen that the ASB um meeting on February twenty-sixth is canceled.
ASB on the twenty-sixth is canceled, okay? Council Holland, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, um, the Black History event in Amber Valley was changed from February tenth, so it's now February twenty-fifth. One to five and March first, um, Athbasque Landing Trail Steering Committee and that's being hosted at Sturgeon County.
Can you repeat the Black History, please?
Yep, the uh Black History event, Amber Valley, uh, one to five, February twenty-fifth.
And the uh other one you said was the Landing Trail Steering Committee and it was on.
And that's on March first, Sturgeon County.
Councilmen's.
Uh, February fifteenth, um, there's a Athbasque Watershed Council, uh. Zoom meeting, Teams meeting or whatever you want to call it. So. Just heads up.
That's it, Council Cromwell.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, Council Gerlock. They're already up, they're done, okay? Any in March you want to pop on? Okay. Um, Council Captain.
March twenty-fifth, Community Futures in Westlock. Was moved due to RMA, so that's. Kind of them. Most of their board members are achieving. I think that's all I have for change.
Um, Council Anderson, nothing, Council Wallack?
Okay.
Okay, uh, healthcare retention meeting on February. Twenty-sixth. And Alberta Hub meeting on March twenty-sixth.
Okay. Alberta Hub on March twenty-sixth and healthcare retention on February twenty-sixth. Counselor Chamsak, your hands up again.
Um, I just have a question. Counselor Cromwell. I'm not sure if you got my email. Are you available March fourth?
Is it something that?
Yes, it relates to the calendar. We had to move the eighteenth of the county library to March fourth. Because it, it's during our Army.
Sorry, I was just looking at May.
Okay, so.
March fourth, the Monday, can do that.
Okay, so we're cancelling the county library on the eighteenth and moving it to March fourth. Everybody got that? Counselor Holland?
On February twenty-eighth, there's the fire and drought in Grand Prairie. Uh, it's there quite a few people that will be attending that from this council to. To. Okay, so February twentieth, we should put that on our calendar then as something that's happening for the fire and drought. Seminar, I guess it is, seminar?
Workshop.
Workshop? Fire and drought workshop, Grand Prairie.
That's not the same one that's happening here. It's a, they're. I think they're. Related, but they're different, yeah.
They're related, but uh, a little bit more on the fire end. The, the workshop that's coming here is uh, mainly all about the drought. So.
I was just wondering if administration, administration would mind uh, registering me for that workshop. You too.
The uh, but the only one I would add is um. A B Munis uh, in the conference, uh, Alec, I feel like. I'm going to attend the uh, A B Munis Leader Summit. Uh, there's some conversations around the drought and the planning that the province is doing. So that's on March fourteenth, and I'll be down for that. Is, uh, would be appropriate to take a motion to approve the, to adopt the calendars as amended? Counselor Gerlick? Do you want to add something? You're going to move the motion. Okay, Counselor Gerlick has uh, made a motion to adopt the calendars as amended. All those in favor? And opposed? Count is nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Ten point one D, Counselor Menz.
Promise I won't be long with these, like normal, uh, Alice meeting, uh, was held February seventh. At the County, uh, Westlock County Office. And uh. It was one of those meetings where a lot of governance and terms of reference. And uh, parameters, looking at uh. We didn't really talk about any. Any projects, uh, that'll be on April. April third, I think is the date for the, for the next, uh. Yeah, April third. Here in Athabasca. We'll discuss that with administration later, but uh. Um. So yeah, there was just a lot on terms of reference and, and uh. Annual payments review, we're gonna. Uh, look at possibly boosting them a bit just due to the fact of everybody, a lot of Alice committees throughout Alberta has, has started to boost their payments for. For. Uh. Acreages. Among acreages that we take up, uh, one thing about the payments, a lot of people forget. That it's, it's classified as an acreage payment, but it's actually a payment for, for maintaining the project. So if you have a shelter belt that, that loses a whole bunch of trees. You actually have to. Replace those trees. You don't get any extra money or you don't get extra trees to, to replace them. You, you actually have to. Replace them with your own money, so. Fences break, uh, moose or. Help jump through your fence. That's, that's where the. Classified as acreage payments goes to is actual acreage maintenance. So, so. You know, we talked a lot about that and about actually increasing some of those fees, but uh. Um, the other thing, summer tour, we're looking at doing a summer tour with the, with the pack. This would be our first s- summer tour to go around, look at some of the. Some of the projects in that. Regionally, uh, if we have a meeting, we might go that way and look at a couple there, but. We're just going to do it with the pack. This first time, see how it goes. And then if, if the summer tour goes very well, well, then we'll start. Adding in if, if for other people, so. Uh. That's, that's mainly about it. A lot of just governance stuff that we went over and. And discussed one, one project that was. Brought to. Uh, the coordinators. Uh. Thoughts about maybe taking over a. A quarter of LPAC trees and it was like, it was, it was huge. It was a, it's a. Huge thing to look at. We had a very good discussion over that. Yeah, I think we kind of said no. We weren't going to start doing that. It's too, too big. There's a new, there's a new uh, uh. Conservation. Monies out there from the federal government and uh, Alice has been asked to look after it in a way. Uh, to promote it and it's, and it's huge. It's on, it's on big. Big monies like, like in a hundred thousand dollar end of, of in payments and stuff like that, so. So. There's uh. It's called RALP. And it's under, there's going to be. Four people that, that. If, if. A project comes into Alice and they say, okay, this is too huge, but go to RALP, they'll send it to, there's four people that are set up. To look after these, after these projects, so. It's not put right on to the coordinator itself because it's huge. It, it, and there's lots of money in there, so anybody wanting to. Do uh, fence grazing and stuff like that can jump on this where. There's no acre payment for it. It's just. Huge amount of money going out there, so. There'll be some other information being given out on that and then, uh, yeah, that's pretty well it for the meeting. Next meeting's April third, like I said here, so. Looking forward to that. That's where we'll be looking at projects for this year.
So the next item we have is uh, Water Commission. The highlights that I'll bring up and I, Councilmen, you fill in the blanks as you see fit. Overall utilization in twenty twenty-three was about ninety-five percent of budget. The commission continues to work on the asset management and governed governance review project. The uh, timing. Uh, for that, there's a, is uh, sometime this month, the draft of the final report is expected. And um. Ultimately, um, a lot of it is uh, is really those big things. We talked also about an M C C A C grant. Potential um, to have the commission work with. The county to improve the utility utilization in county buildings. Couple of the buildings, when you compare the utility rates, they're, uh, the, the difference is astronomical and so. That program um, has the potential at least to provide some funding to. To improve the. The function of those buildings. Counselor Menz, you want to add anything?
I guess, uh. There was a, yeah, the governance grant is, is uh, it's moving forward, uh. They are looking at. Possibly. You know, putting in the uh, ideas of uh, taking over Athabasca County's water distribution end, which would be great. Which I, I'm looking very forward to that. That part of it coming out for sure. Uh, another one was the uh, twenty twenty-four business plan. Uh, that's a, that's a great read. That's a. To myself, I, I figured that would be a great read. I actually have that in the next. I missed it this time, uh, putting that in, but I, I have it for the next uh, county council agenda. I think it's good to. To look over. Uh, Water North Coalition Meeting, May first here in Athabasca. Uh, we're going to tag team with the commission, the county and town, that. Bringing people in, uh, regarding Water North, uh, that's the northern part of the province where. Where uh, come in and talk about. Anything to do with water. So. Uh. And I guess, yeah, next meeting's March fifth. Everything's moving along very well.
Uh, ten point one G.
Thank you.
Counselor Holland?
Thank you. Um, February second, twenty twenty-four, we had a special meeting held in Athabasca, both in person and via Zoom. Uh, with the C A Os and the A L T S members from Sturgeon County, Athabasca, Gibbons, Westlock County, and Athabasca County. Plus representatives from the Trail Board of Edmonton and the River Valley Alliance. The agenda uh, consisted of uh, A L, A L T history, a brief history, which was presented by uh, Linda Watson Strong with Alberta Trailnet. Um, the purpose of the special meeting being um, the M O U um, with shareholders, um, who the shareholders are, how the M O U will address maintenance and funding. Uh, what the opportunities are for tourism grants, economic benefits, uh, for example, mud sweat gears and Edmonton Bike Tour, film industry, um, business opportunities along the trail. Building community, et cetera. What the budget is, um, and currently and potentially, um. Is there potential for a part nine corporation? Um, there was an appointment of the chair to that subcommittee, which was me, uh, the appointment of the recording secretary, which was Counselor Edwards. Uh, conversation surrounded again around M O U of the trail and the, as needs to be stressed, is under development. Uh, possible updates to the twenty twenty, twenty ten master plan to reflect current status. Uh, the A L T root challenges such as easements, budget implications and potential of um. Liability concerns and how to offset those, uh, official agreements, of course, are always um, top of the um, agenda there. Uh, the master plan um, has been the guiding document for all efforts. In the development of the trail and um, we are reminded, of course, we had financial um. Aid with creating that master plan in, when it was in its production uh, phase. Um, the municipalities are, of course, working towards other municipalities as long as well, are looking towards easements, um, applying for grants. Um, Alberta Trailnet is also applying for grants, um, as they are the granting body for funds for the T C T, which is Trans Canada Trail. Um, there's been over five million dollars raised so far, which is just phenomenal, um, for an intermunicipal trail. Uh, we're also looking at intermunicipal agreements, uh, the historic economic corridor. Um, agreements, of course, with trail operators, the M R M Habitat, private landowners, uh, survey plans. There was, it's just a whole pile of information that's being discussed. Um, the website for uh, Athabasca Landing Trail is under redevelopment, um. The C A Os of um, Athabasca, Sturgeon County, Westlock, Gibbons were able to bring their thoughts and concerns forward. Um, before unfortunately, we experienced the internet outage in town. Uh, which shut down quite a bit of our meeting and unfortunately, CEO Beck, I'm probably got left in the dark, wondering what the hell just happened there. He didn't get a chance to speak, but um, the importance, of course, of the intermunicipal trail system and municipalities continuing to collaborate during and after development. With the next meeting being March first. Uh, with Sturgeon County as um. We all know the urgency of the importance of these agreements.
Athabasca Regional Waste, Counselor Menz, you want to lead this one?
I can, I can start. It's.
Things are happening.
Yeah. It's uh. It was a good meeting, uh, had it on, uh, when was it, February fifth? Um, here in Athabasca. Went through a lot of the financials, financials, all good and everything. We're going to be using, we're doing a. Digging another phase. I think it's the third phase. Cell. In uh, in the uh. In the regional up there at Lawrence Lake. We're going to be using quite a bit of reserves. This year, but. That's what we put in for reserves, right? We'll rebuild them, so. So uh, that was awarded, we awarded contract there. For one point two. Uh, one point two million. With the, with engineering and, and can, uh. Saltins, you're going to be looking at one point six.
And interestingly, it was significantly less than originally budgeted.
Yeah, so, so that worked out very well. Um. There's not a lot of incidentals when you're really, when you're digging a hole. But you know, it's, it's especially, especially when you have uh, when you have salt tests and all this other stuff, so. And uh. I don't know what else we'll be doing there. It's uh, we talked about the uh, long-term planning of, of, of the uh. Uh, transfer stations again. Had a good, great discussion on that and how. And, and got some numbers and, and, and that, and how, how much is costing per ton to move? Move waste from once, one transfer station to the. To the town or move it right out to the regional and, and it uh, it opens up your eyes on how much. How much is costing for, and everything costs money. As soon as you bring in trucking, it costs money, so. So trying to come up with plans on maybe how to. Change doing so much trucking.
The other, the other, you know, in the long-term view, um, there's a discussion around what resources do we have and how do we effectively? Um, utilize them and what opportunities exist? And so there is the beginnings of, of the exploration of. Both. Um, what happens after this cell is finished at, at Lawrence Lake and, and what do we? Do we, you know, continue to expand on land we have there or do we focus our efforts in other land the commission has? And also, um, are there opportunities regarding the uh, some, some industrial waste that could be um. Cited on uh, the, the. The uh, ground that's allocated for cells. I can't remember their letters, D and E, I think, or.
Yeah.
But the, the long-term, um, some future stuff to see what, what that would look like.
Yeah, and then uh, other than that, that's. It's a great need.
Thank you. Um, ten point one.
Do, does, does, do these cells require liner?
Uh, the, the, the future ones will.
Future ones will? And then how many cells are left that, like, what, what is the? Oh, projected, are there quite a few cells left? Uh, is it long-term or?
I feel like there's about a hundred years.
Oh.
Yeah, we're looking at a, like, like, if we keep going the way we are, we got a, a hundred, hundred, a hundred and twenty years to, before we fill it up.
Well, we can deal with it when it's done then.
That's when I think it's safe to defer.
Yeah, you know, there was discussion about uh, uh, waste, waste for energy, you know, and, and stuff like that, like expanding, going into. Into possibly. Doing something else with our waste instead of burying it. Let's uh, let's start.
I, I think would be an interesting challenge and this is for the board to work through, but you know, to set the, the. To say, what if we tried to, to take an approach where we're never going to bury another bag of garbage again? After we get. Um, this last cell done. That gives you at least a decade to work to that, but, and it, it may be something, you know, that is not quite achievable, but if you set the target high, maybe there's a. There's a solution that's um, more sensible because again, our transportation is. Is a huge piece of um. Moving refuse.
Yeah, well, even the uh, go back into it with the Eco Mister. Uh, where we, where we uh, evaporate the water and that instead of hauling it. It's, there's some huge savings there. That Eco Mister didn't fire up until, I think he said, what, June or July?
Yeah, something.
Of last year and, and virtually. If we can get going in April, like, like.
When it was hot and dry.
Yeah, and, and we won't be hauling anything out of there. It's other than the odd load of, of real. Stuff to, to, to go to the uh, downhole.
Have a concentrated leachate that, that's out of there instead of, so there's a, you know, and it's. Two or three-year payback, I think, on that, that, that device. So, and it's amazing.
That was a very good buy. Very good.
Notwithstanding that they were broken into and had all the copper wire chopped off.
Yeah.
But that's, you know. That, expect that to be repaired by middle of March. Um, Northeast Alliance for Growth and Opportunity, which is the Northeast Mares and Reeves, there's a meeting on uh, in Myrnham. Uh, that subsequent to the meeting, there was a really interesting tour of their, their school and some of the wood shop stuff there. They've got kids working in the shop with power tools as young as grade four. Their uh, solar-powered golf carts, they're working on a tiny home, um. They're, they're doing lots of interesting things to engage their, their kids and it, it relates a little bit to the demographic and making, trying to find ways to keep. Kids in school longer because they found that by the time they hit. There's a, a piece of their population there that once they hit that fifteen, sixteen, they were uh, leaving school. And so this was to try to engage them a little longer. Um, key items uh, that I would highlight from that discussion. The uh, working on a terms of reference, once that's approved, it'll, I'll bring it back for you to see, but it really just outlines kind of the. But it really just outlines kind of the of guiding principles for that group because they do charge a membership fee and will collect. Funds and it again will um. Document sort of the purpose of the group, which is. Generally to advocate for uh, issues that are regional in nature and to avoid issues which are single or a few municipality. Concerns, if it's a local concern, you do it on your own. If it's something that affects a big region, and we supported this for the last couple of years. Um. The, one of the big discussions was around Highway twenty eight, which again doesn't affect us directly because it's not at the county, but certainly our county is served by. Industry off of Highway twenty eight. And um, the uh, the expectation. Yeah, you know, the they're looking to to see substantial commitments in the twenty twenty six capital budget and be. Um, my understanding on those, because of the timing, they're kind of a rolling multi-year budget. Uh, the twenty twenty six is really the year that's being planned for now. Um, that um. That they should see substantial capital commitments to that project. The other item uh, of significance is the healthcare. And uh, look, the advocacy generally, um, the intent is to. Uh, build out some documents uh, that will come back to everybody's individual council. And then we can do um, collectively an inventory of what we have in our region. Uh, what we do well, what we uh, are close to being able to do, and so the capacity of our facilities. And then what are the shortfalls in the region as it relates to health? Is it personnel? Is it services? Are there other needs? So that as um, as the. Lobbying and the the advocacy to the provincial government goes, there's a consistent message from the northeast. And I mean, overall. There's sort of a feeling that um. That when you look around, given the economic. Uh, engine that exists in this part of the province, that uh. The uh, they want a louder voice or at least a voice at the table. So that that'll be coming back and uh, at that point, we'll be able to reach out. In our communities here and gather information about what's what's in place. And. To be able to provide good information to the government about uh, the status of where things are at. Um. One of the uh. I can't remember, the mayor of somewhere was talking about a meeting they had with the premier and they. They explained a couple of the the things that occur in in the region as it relates to healthcare, the long drive times and. And she was uh, reported to have been surprised and not aware of the the distances of people in our region travel for healthcare. And also some of the other bizarre things that happen that would defy what we might call common sense, where you know, you have to go. Left when the closer service is available, right, but it's in a different uh. Different, some artificial line is preventing that. Um. The um. There was a little bit of talk again uh, about L G F F. And um, one, I think it's um. Mayor Mcfee of Vegerville uh, has proposed the idea and suggests that we should consider this through R M A and A B munis. Um. L G F F and M S I was all cut, given the, you know, ballooning provincial debt, and so the suggestion is that as the debt is paid. The interest savings should get dumped back into the base funding as a way to kind of compromise with the government to try to grow that base. Because I think A B munis both, when you hear them talk, they'll say uh, the L G F F fund is about a billion dollar short. And um. And then this would be a way to. When you save a penny, it can come back in. Right, that's. That's the report I. You provide on that meeting. Next on our list is. A motion to accept the reports for information. Council Chamsik has moved. All those in favor? On adoption of motion, uh, it's carried. Council Wallack, your hand went up, I think.
Yeah, I.
Hi, thank you. It. Is eleven twenty five, it would be in order to take a motion going to close session. Counselor Minz, come, Carmel, you come out. Um. On the question of the adoption of the motion to enter closed session, all those in favor? The motion is adopted. And we'll take. Two minutes to refresh your coffee. This is not a long item. Um. Once we.